No, she does, and that's where I'm from. No, no one in here. I don't. I know she's one of the new employees.
Excuse me, guys?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. And we'll begin with a moment of silence, so please stand. Okay, thank you. Okay. 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 Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. And we'll begin with a moment of silence, so please stand. Okay, thank you. I will call this meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance since we're all standing. So Scott, I believe you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no recorded National Anthem during the summer. So this evening, it will look a little bit different. A couple of items look a little different on the agenda. When it was originally passed, the agenda had a first read for revising Policy 1-204. We've decided to wait and see how this plays out legally in the courts before adding this to the agenda. So that has been taken off the agenda and put on pause till we see what happens legally. And then we may revisit it at that time. You'll also see the public comment is separately listed as an agenda item. So with the adoption of our new policies, one of which 1-302, went into effect July 1st, we hear all public comment on items during the meeting towards the beginning of the meeting. So board members may request items for the consent agenda be polled and placed on action items to allow further discussion, but the public comment will happen at the beginning on any agenda item. So not right now, but as we get to the start of the meeting, we will... As we get into the start of the meeting, I will call for that. So please sign up in the lobby if you have not already if you want to make any comments about any of the agenda items tonight. We do have a hearing, which is a little bit different, but any regular agenda item or a hearing item, please sign up for. With that, we'll start with the governing board meeting procedures. And a video on the procedures will be played, and take it away.
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected governing board members served without compensation and volunteered countless hours. The president and the clerk of the board are elected in January. Under state law, the governing board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. The public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that the board discusses or requires the board to take action. If you wish to comment on an action or discussion item, please complete a request to address the board form before the item is discussed. The form is located in the lobby. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak once recognized by the governing board president. Please state your name before you speak. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public, which is an opportunity to speak to the governing board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. Please submit a request to address the board form to participate in the call to the public. If you would like the board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing to the board at least five working days before that meeting. The superintendent or governing board president will consider your request. Thank you for your attendance and involvement in tonight's meeting.
And tonight, public comment has to be on items on the agenda? The comment that they... Public comment they talked about in that video is at our next meeting, it's every other meeting. I do want to recognize that President Hutchinson is online and is joining us. And Member Sears is on her way, so she should be here in just a little bit. So I just want you to know that these are not two empty seats. President Hutchinson is joining us remotely. With that, we move to the governing board calendar. Dr. Forliss, will you please review the governing board calendar?
Thank you very much, Clark O'Reilly, members of the board. Our next scheduled governing board meeting is July 23rd, beginning at 5:00. That is our summer start time. And then after the regular meeting, we will go into executive session to begin to discuss my evaluation for this last academic year. Important date for us all to have on our calendars is August 1st. That is our first day of school when we get to welcome all of our children back into our classrooms. On August 13th, we will return to our regular start time. It still will be 5:00, but 5:00 will be a study session. We will have student presentations from the MPS HackTivate where they dug into lots of timely topics and have come up with some pretty creative solutions that they would like to share with our governing board. At 6:30, we will start our regular meeting. And then after that regular meeting, we will go back into executive session. That will be the governing board only who will be discussing my evaluation of this academic year. Forecasting to the end of August at 5:00, we will have a study session on our ESER report. You will know that our governing board has had a keen eye on our ESER planning and has asked for a report on what that spending looks like, so we will dedicate ample time to that conversation. At 6:30, we will start with our regular meeting. And then September 2nd is Labor Day. There is no school. Schools and district offices will be closed. And then rounding out the beginning of the month is September 10th. 6:30 will be a regularly scheduled governing board meeting. So before we know it, we are back to our regularly scheduled board meeting times. And we've got lots planned.
Thank you. And before we get into the hearing and then the regular agenda, I do want to read our statement about our procedures. This is an official governing board meeting. The board has important business to conduct that's essential to the operation of the district. Everyone's welcome to express ideas or concerns to the board in accordance with the agenda. The poster in the boardroom describes positive behaviors expected and behaviors that can't be tolerated. Speak and act respectfully, please. No conversations, no reactive comments. They are disruptive. It's the governing board's present responsibility to maintain proper order so the board can conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. If you're disruptive or interfere with the conduct of this meeting, you'll be asked to leave so the board can conduct the business of the district. And hopefully that won't happen. And we are being observed tonight by a boy scout for his merit badge, so he's also watching, not just the board, okay? So please, let's have a good meeting. And with that, let's move to our hearing. A public hearing on the proposed budget for the '24-'25 fiscal year. And we'll begin the public hearing. It's procedural. It doesn't require a motion or a vote. Mr. Alexander and Mr. Thompson presented the '24-'25 budget at the last board meeting. The public hearing is an opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed budget. Board members will have the opportunity to discuss the budget later in the meeting. Mrs. Kirby, is there anyone who signed in to speak for the public hearing? No, they have not, okay? Thank you. But since this is a public hearing, members of the public can speak without signing in, even if they... So is there anyone present who would like to speak on the '24-'25 budget? Seeing no one, thank you. So we've had our public hearing. We haven't heard from the public. With that, I will close the public hearing. And the regular meeting will now resume. And the board will be able to address this later on on the agenda. Go to the next item. Okay, the next item is personnel, personnel requests. And with that, I will ask Mr. Ring. Do you want to address the personnel requests? Oh, that's right. I saw that and thought, okay, that can't be right, because I'm used to the other way of doing it. And what's on my screen is not public comment one. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Do we have any requests for public comment? So we have no requests for public... No one has signed in for public comment on any of the agenda items. And so with that, I will close the public comment. And we'll move to personnel requests. Okay. All right, so, okay. That is... Okay. We'll have to fix this screen in front of me, because that's up above the line now. So, okay, review of agenda is the next item. So Dr. Forliss?
Review of the agenda is an opportunity of the governing board members would like to make any changes to the agenda as it is posted.
Are there any requests to pull any of the items from the consent agenda? No? No? Seeing none? Now, we'll get to the personnel items. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel request, including the addendum?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Most moved and seconded. Mrs... Are there any discussion on the personnel items? With hearing none, we will take our vote. Mrs. Kirby, could you please take our vote? Okay, with a vote of four to zero, the personnel has passed. With the approval of these requests tonight, we're recognizing one new administrator. Dr. Forliss, will you please introduce her? And will my fellow board members join us on the floor?
Madam President and members of the governing board, with tonight's approval of the personnel requests, we have a new incoming administrator to celebrate. Would Lynn LaHusky please join me at the podium? Come on over, Lynn. Let me tell you a little bit about... Let me tell you a little bit about Lynn. Lynn is the incoming assistant principal at Adams and Roosevelt Elementary Schools. She is currently an instructional coach with the Madison School District in Phoenix. Lynn began her career in education as a third grade teacher in the Clark County School District in Las Vegas, Nevada. She has also served as a teacher and dean of students in Battle Creek, Michigan. Lynn holds a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from the University of Nevada and a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from the Grand Valley State University in Michigan. Lynn, we would like to congratulate you to your new leadership role here in Mesa Public Schools, and our governing board would like to shake hands and recognize you. And then we will do a group picture. We'll move up into the limelight right there, and we'll get a picture. And if you have any family members that you would like to join, we'll have them join as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Sounds great, here's the handshake. So Lynn, we know that we've got an action-packed agenda tonight, and you and your family are welcome to stay, but if you want to go celebrate your new leadership position, it'd be okay if you left now, that would be fine.
Okay, then, the next item on the agenda are the consent agenda items. No one has requested to pull an item, and we have not had anyone ask to pull an item to speak on an item. So we will take them as, all items listed will be considered as a group, and will be approved with one motion. If a board member would like to spotlight or comment on a consent agenda item, please do so after the vote. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Moved by Member Davis, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Walden. With that, please call the vote.
Board Member Sears votes in affirmative.
With a vote of five to zero, the items pass. And with that, we move on to our one action item. Our action item tonight is the adoption of the proposed 2425 budget. The board will be able to discuss the budget once I have a motion, once I have a motion and a second. Do I have a motion to adopt the 2425 budget?
So moved.
Moved by Member Sears, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Member Davis. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Do we have a presentation we have first that we need to do?
Madam President, I want to say Madam President, and I can't do that. Members Walden, this evening is just for the feedback, so...
Okay, because we did it two weeks ago.
We did the presentation two weeks ago. I will highlight again for the public's understanding, there is an outstanding tax issue in the Maricopa County, of which entities that rely on property tax, like a school district, some cities, other municipalities, like community colleges. The taxes must be adjusted and the judgment must be paid, and then the liability that creates as a cash deficit to our district must be addressed. The governing board does not set a tax rate. I think it's probably the most misunderstood thing about our budget. The governing board adopts a budget, which they are working towards this evening, and on that, we have estimated what we think that tax impact might be. This evening's budget includes the estimation of what we currently understand to be the liability for the district for this tax judgment. But we also understand there are still a lot of outstanding questions, things that need to still be calculated, and we don't know how the county supervisors will set the final tax rate. So to be very clear, we just provide the data to the county, and the county board of supervisors actually establishes our tax rate. Our tax, proposed tax rate on our budget right now includes that judgment. It may or may not continue to be included as the county works through this process. But we think that as a result, what we've provided to the public this evening is what we think of as maybe a worst-case scenario, which is still a decrease in our tax rate, which is good news. But we don't know exactly what's going to happen in the next few months as the county works through this judgment. So I just want to be super clear that the governing board this evening is not establishing a tax rate. They're simply adopting a budget with an anticipated impact to the taxes that will be finalized by the county board of supervisors.
Thank you. I wasn't sure, because we had documents attached in the agenda, so I didn't know if we were going to go back over it.
We just did that for the public so that they don't have to go looking for them. But we had an exhaustive conversation, don't see the need to repeat myself again.
No, you don't. We had a really good discussion. I have some additional questions, because we received a memo from the county superintendent's office. And so with that memo, I feel like I got new information since the last meeting, so I just have a couple of questions from that memo. One of which is, it talks about, you know, just to clarify, of course, we, the district did nothing wrong. The district submits a budget. There was a tax rate that was set, and the assessor over-collected from landowners. They sued, and there's now a judgment, because they're going to get money back. And so all the districts have a debt now, that through no fault of their own, from a county error in over-collecting taxes from a certain group. So we're getting state aid, and in the memo, though, it does say that they didn't expect school years to address this in the current fiscal year, that they anticipated that the districts would address it in the 2526 school year. But there's also going to be a recalculation of the state aid. And so we're basing it off of estimates now, but can we table the vote on the tax rate for the judgment at a later date when we have more final numbers? So when we know for sure what the state aid is going to be? If that's a possibility, because we're looking at in our budget, a judgment of 5.6 million, but that, it could go down if we get more from the state aid. And so I'm concerned that we'll over-collect then on that judgment.
Member Walden, I think there's two major issues. One is, again, this is solely our guesstimate at the tax rate. You are not establishing a tax rate. So I don't think you can separate that, because that would actually potentially have you voting on a tax rate, which you are not doing this evening. You are simply adopting a budget, and there is an estimation of what our taxes. We have read the memos, too. It still appears to us a little unclear as to, they are clearly going to take the cash from our district in this year to settle the $300 million liability, of which the district has 11.2 million, of which we anticipate half of it coming to us from state aid recalculation, which right now, we're being told, won't happen until the end of this fiscal year. But one way or another, we're going to be liable for an amount. I'm hoping that that becomes clearer as we get closer to the county supervisors setting the tax rate. So they may choose to not address this in 25, you are correct. But we are not saying that they have to, or nothing you're doing this evening would force them to do this. This will be their decision as they see fit in addressing this judgment. And we're still not completely clear as to whether that is going to be addressed in '25 and '26, or simply in '26. And so again, we're just proposing the budget and the estimate as the complete liability that we think we know based on the information we've provided. Nothing you do this evening will change ultimately what the county supervisors decide to do in setting our tax rate. You could decide to decrease the tax rate, increase the tax rate, change it on the forms, and ultimately, they're still going to follow whatever process they decide based on the budget adoption, not on the estimation. The estimation that we put on the front page does not affect the outcome, and in fact, they're never the same. We're always hopefully pretty close, because we try to estimate well. But sometimes the county, by the time they set the tax rate, does it at a rate different than what we've estimated, because again, we just don't have all the information they do.
Yeah, I understand that. Is the 5.6 million from the judgment, though, isn't that included in the budget? So in the budget that we're...
It's included in our estimate of what the tax liability might be for this year. It is not in any way, shape, or form in our budget, because this is solely about cash. In the state of Arizona, and the way school finance works, we are expense-based, formula-driven off the amount of students we have. None of that changes that. So the amount of money available to us in the budget, the amount that you're adopting this evening, does not reflect or have any concerns with what the cash or taxes are for the district. It's simply a formulaic amount. That data then drives a tax rate for the county when they determine how much money needs to be collected. But your actions this evening are doing nothing more than adopting a budget based on an amount per student received from the state formula and presented to you this evening. It does not anticipate what the final taxes are. We're just estimating it based on the information we have, because we're required to do that on the forms. I almost wish in a way, they didn't make us do that, because again, you're not setting a tax rate. We're just trying to give the public an idea of what the taxes for the district might be, and again, it will be finalized in a few months.
All right, I'd like to, I wasn't here for the last meeting, I was traveling, so I want to clarify. I don't care about the tax rate, what we're talking about tonight is the budget.
Right.
How much are we going to spend? And you're saying that 5.6 million is not in the budget we're approving tonight?
Correct. That is just a cash issue with regards to tax.
So how would, if we don't approve it tonight, and we have to pay 5.6 million this year, how do we do that? If it's not in our budget, do we adjust the budget later?
So again, I have to separate the two issues. You do not do anything for taxes, you are doing a budget.
I'm just talking budget, just talking...
The budget has nothing to do with the 5.6 million. The tax rate only anticipates that. Nothing in the budget affects that discussion. The tax rate is a combination of our budget and the influences of how much our assessed valuation are, and how much cash we have. And all of that leads to an estimation of the taxes. But the amount of your budget, the amount of budget approved this evening is completely separate, has no impact from the perspective of setting a tax rate. It's simply the data used for that.
I'm not talking about tax rate, I'm just talking about how much money we're going to spend, because whatever we wind up having to spend, that will be used to determine the tax rate.
Right, and that has not changed from the proposal, it is exactly the same amount.
My question is, where does the 5.6 million? It seems like that would be in the amount of money that would be, that we would be approving to spend if we needed to spend it in the coming year, and you're saying it's not, because that's in cash.
That is a tax cash issue, has nothing to do with our budget.
So when I vote tonight...
You're just adopting in the budget.
And that 5.6 million is not part of it?
It may or may not become part of our tax rate, depending on what the supervisor uses. I understand.
Item's budget.
There's nothing in the budget about 5.6 million.
And the county will take that into account when they set our tax rate?
That's correct.
But it is not part of our budget tonight?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions?
Well, I just, I mean, to your question, it just seems like, where's that money coming from then? Where, if we have to pay a 5.6 million judgment, where's that coming from if it's not part of our budget?
That will be decided by the county supervisors as they look at our tax liability and determine what our tax rate will be. It will not have anything to do with your actions this evening. You could, I could change the estimate on the form today to not include the 5.6 million, and that doesn't change what the county supervisors might do in a few months. It's solely an estimate, and I could be wrong this evening, but I estimated conservatively at the higher amount, thinking that if they do move forward, I would not want us to propose a tax rate and then have it go up, because they did something that we were not 100% sure they would do or not at this time. So we are deferring to the worst-case scenario, including it. But your actions this evening will not influence how they move forward on that tax rate. That is their decision to how they're going to address the quasi-Meyer decision, and I am not certain. It can be inferred from the questionnaires that you looked at, that maybe they are going to defer that to next year. But that has not been made clear to us, and I've been in presentations from the county superintendent's office, and I just don't have better information on it than that this evening. So I don't feel comfortable making the change, given that we don't really know what they're doing next.
Okay, because there's been some discussion that for some districts, if they have, if they have cash balances, and a lot of districts do have cash balances, that they could just pay the judgment with the cash balance, and then there's no need to submit that tax deficit to the board of supervisors.
We are in a cash-negative situation, and the other part of the presentation from two weeks ago included the discussion around the fact, we are $8 million cash short of what should have been collected. We get there because of smaller tax judgments over the last few years. So again, when we estimate a tax rate, so do the county supervisors, and sometimes they get it right, and sometimes they don't. So they estimate a tax rate, and sometimes all that cash comes in, and for some districts, they collect more. And for a few districts like ours, they collected less. So we're actually in a cash-negative situation, so we have to make up that $8 million, plus the 5.6 million that'll be due in the judgment, and our tax rate will still be going down. Now, do I know for sure that that 5.6 will be collected in '25? I do not at this time. There's a possibility that it gets deferred to '26, at which time, the county supervisors will simply set the tax rate that much lower for us for the '25 year, and will not include that 5.6 in our tax rate. I just don't know what they're going to do at this time, so I'm including it. But you are not establishing whether they do or do not. They will make that decision, we do not. We just give them the information and they set the tax rate.
Just a final question, though, doesn't the district have a say in, because we have like 100 million in other cash accounts, and there's been legislation that changed how those cash accounts can be used? Like we have, we total up all the various accounts that have cash, but isn't, couldn't the district decide, though, to use cash to pay that judgment?
Excellent question, and the answer is no. Those funds are established in statutory purposes, and they have collected money through Medicaid, through indirect costs. And you cannot, there's even been a question, can you move your M&amp;O dollars to cover some of the debt service amounts for districts? And you cannot move money around like that. We have to keep the funds in the original purpose that they were used to raise the funds, so debt service has to pay for debt service. So if we collected not enough money for override, or not enough money for our bond, then those funds have to be replenished, and we can't mix and match the funds. That is a very good question, it has been asked by more than one district. We can't move the, because there are legal constraints to why those funds became to where they are and how they became, we can't just use them to solve this problem. The only districts that can solve their problem without a tax rate implication are those that are cash-rich, or what they call dead cash, or inaccessible cash, because they literally have just more cash than they need, and they can't spend it on anything. It doesn't change your budget, it doesn't give you ability to move it around or do anything with it. They are able to use that, because really what the county is going to do is just take some of our cash away. And the issue is, it creates a tax... And the issue is it creates a tax liability or a deficit in our cash that has to then be replenished. That has to be replenished through our tax rate since there's no other way to replenish those taxes.
Yeah. And I do understand that, you know, this was a necessary error, that the district did not over-collect taxes. We submitted a budget. Some people were overtaxed. We only spent and received what our approved budget was. I understand there was never an overspending from the district. We just collected enough for that budget. But it sounds like, so yeah, the board of supervisors, the county offices, they'll be determining, you know, we know they determine the tax rate, but they'll be deciding when and the tax rate for this judgment. And it's possible they'll hopefully, based on the memos wait for the state recalculation, our amount could drop. We're not committed that we have to pay 5.6 million. It could drop, and then they'll, it sounds like they'll wait for all that data, and then they can determine that amount. And I think if something changed or we got new information, since we're not actually voting on the judgment, then we can continue to address that judgment in the months going up to it. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. And I do hope that by, you know, we will be updating you, and I hope there will be more information on this over the next few months. I've been, you know, we've talked with the county superintendent's office, and you just have a lot of entities. You have the county assessor involved, you have the county treasurer involved, you have the county superintendent's office. And quite frankly, I'm not sure they're all on the same page yet about exactly how this should be processed. What I will reference, and I appreciate your words, Member Walden, that as a reminder from our presentation, this is the process as established by law and how judgments are addressed. This has nothing to do with the district. This has no reflection on our actions in any way, shape, or form. And we can be sad, frustrated, or angry, but this is the way the law currently exists for this to be addressed. So we are simply impacted by the law as it's written in Arizona to deal with a judgment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know this is an unprecedented lawsuit that happened.
It really is. It's, we've always had judgments, but they're very tiny, typically one or two, or maybe a half a dozen homeowners or property owners might get adjustments because of the reclassification of their property. Never seen anything on the level of 300 million in one county, by the way. This is only Maricopa County that's affected. So yeah, it's really unprecedented, and I think that's why I just don't have enough answers for you this evening on exactly how it's going to proceed. And I don't want to, I'm trying to do my best. I don't want to mislead you or bring you poor information. I just want to try to give you the facts as we understand them at this moment. They may change in a week, they may change in a month, they change in a year. We really don't know where we're headed quite yet.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And it's so good news the tax rate's going down overall, so.
Overall, the tax rate's going down regardless, so that's good news.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? I did learn something new tonight, that this isn't part of the budget, and this is going to be done by the county as they see fit, basically.
It is something, Dr. O'Reilly, that I think is misconstrued about the budget process. Boards do not establish tax rates. We just present budgets, and then ultimately, the county supervisors are responsible for making sure we have the required cash and revenue to fund that.
Okay, thank you. We have no other questions, and I can hear from the ether. So we've got a motion and a second. No other comments? Mrs. Kirby, will you please take our vote? By a vote of five to zero, the budget for '24-'25 passes. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Next are our discussion items, and we have two discussion items tonight on the agenda. We'll begin with the '23-'24 end-of-year dropout rate report. Dr. Forless, will you please introduce the presentation?
Thank you very much, Clark O'Reilly, and members of our board, and President Hutchinson that is joining us virtually. We, our governing board established high priority goals related to graduation rate and increasing proficiency and growth in English language arts and mathematics. And with those goals, there was a calendar of data that was created that we would present data related to those, that had some connection to those three goals each month. So July, it is the time for Dr. Strom to walk us through our dropout rates for our school year ending in 2024. So with that, Dr. Strom.
Clark O'Reilly, members of the board, President Hutchinson virtually. We'll take you through this and have questions at the end. This is our end-of-year dropout report. Please be reminded, final dropout rates by the state are still yet to be determined, so we're pulling the most recent data we possibly can and reporting this. Dropout rate is inherently linked to graduation rate, which is the board goal of reaching an 83% graduation rate by June 3 of 2024. Here's some trends. Dropout rates at all grade levels are generally trending down. You'll see some hiccups from in-between years, but generally, we can say they've been trending down. 12th grade level, we have a little bit of a fluctuation in '22-'23 to '23-'24. And then across resolved races, is what we call it. The reason it's called resolved races is simply because of the fact that kids can identify as more than one race, and so we resolve that a little bit in our backend logic schemes. And we have higher dropout rates in the American Indian, Alaska Native category, Black and African-American category, and Hawaiian Pacific Islander category. The ESL category is trending upwards as well, English as a Second Language being that category. So here's the dropout rates by grade level. You can see that at the 7th grade level, the dropout, dropout rates in states get major 7th through 12th grade. I know generally the public thinks it's a high school thing, but this is something measured all the way down to the 7th grade level. A dropout's considered a kid that moves away from Mesa Public Schools and doesn't re-enroll in a state system somewhere else, or doesn't identify through a public, through a records request of their records that they're moving to an out-of-state school or an international school. So you can see the 7th grade level trending downwards. You can see at the 8th grade level, we're at our lowest level we've been in three years. You can see the fluctuation I referenced in the 12th grade level from 3.1% in '21-'22 up to 5.5, down to 4.7. For the general public to understand, the statewide average is generally between 4.5 and 5.5%. Right now, the '24 dropout rate for the state of Arizona is sitting right at 4.7%, depending on the day when we pulled the data. So you can, and right now Mesa as a whole is sitting at 4.13%. So 4.7 for the statewide average, 4.13 for Mesa Public as a whole when you average it out across all the grade levels. So that is the grade level analysis. You move into resolved race, and you look at the couple comments made earlier. We had a little tick up in African-American dropout rate. I do want you to note that even though the African-American dropout rate's 5.4% in the district 7th through 12th grade, the statewide average is 5.9%. It's a category that generally runs higher throughout the state. It's an issue that all education systems should be looking at trying to solve and have been looking at trying to solve. Indigenous people, American Indian, Alaska Native dropout rates at 7.6% in Mesa Public Schools. It's at 8.1, 8.2% in the state of Arizona, 8.16% in the state of Arizona currently. You move over to two or more races, and we're at 2.5% for the dropout rate. The state of Arizona is right now at 4% for the dropout rate in the two or more races. All those trends being below the state average in dropout rate is just one of the reasons why you see a statewide average sitting around 4.7% and we're sitting around 4.1% with dropout rate. On to the next categories. These are kind of your other subgroup categories. Free and just lunch rate seems to be pretty level in Mesa Public Schools, a little bit of a rise in ESL, English as a Second Language students. And we have a drop in exceptional student services, students who are dropping out down to 1.1%. The statewide average there is right around 3.1%. As you know, we had a calendar of data that the governing board worked with us to develop, and so this is something you required us to report on, I think on maybe three times throughout the year, might have been twice throughout the year. Looking back, I thought maybe we did it in February, maybe this is the second time we've done it. And so this is just the update on progress monitoring of dropout rate throughout the district. Questions?
Any questions from board members? Commissioner, Member Davis?
Just a question. Do we have a, we do a great job on the races, but what about by gender? Do we have any statistics on that, on looking at that?
Yes, and I can pull them up real quickly if there's other questions. Right now, that's data we have readily available. It's the general trend in education that's occurring right now with a lot of data. And that is our female students are generally academically outperforming our male students in a variety of categories. And then that translates into female students' graduation rate being higher and female students' dropout rate being lower. And this is not a Mesa Public Schools issue. This is a national issue that's occurring throughout the United States with how do we engage and get students who are male engaged in the learning process and understanding what their learning outcomes can result in positive effects for their future? So that, I can look it up, but I guarantee that's the trend, that our female students might sit around 3.5% dropout rate while our district average 4.1. Females might sit around 3.5, males might sit around 4.6, 4.7. And that's going to be the same trend for the state. The males are going to be higher than the 4.7 for the state, and the females will be lower.
I have a comment too, just I feel like that, you know, what the district is doing well is addressing the archaic traditional classroom. And how can we engage students in ways that speak to their interests, to what they want to do? You know, we talk about in our portrait of a graduate, the college and career readiness, but we're going above and beyond that in our efforts from what I've seen with the collaborative learning, with C-time flexibility and the ways that we're, and I haven't had the presentation yet on some of it. Mallorwine and I have an appointment soon to go over some of it. But I am excited about the ways that we're changing the traditional classroom because it is, historically shows, and the data shows unfairly weighted that women do tend to do better in that traditional classroom. And so if we want to have peer equality, true equality in our classroom, then we have to try to meet these different needs of our students. So I just wanted to bring that up. I think that that's really exciting, and it seems like the district's really leading the way in that.
Okay, thank you. So other questions? One question, since we're going to talk about graduation rate. So we're talking about dropout rate, and people, dropout rate, graduation rate, what's the difference? Do you want to address that, please?
Yeah.
Briefly?
Yeah. The dropout rate is measured on an annual basis, right? And so when, there's certain withdrawal codes that we have to use, there are state-regulated withdrawal codes, we get audited on them. The State Department of Education comes in and audits our withdrawal codes to make sure we're using them properly. In a given year, when a student withdraws and we mark them in accordance with state practice with a certain withdrawal code, they count as a dropout, right? They could re-enroll with us the next year, and they could go through the same process where if they withdraw, they withdraw for some reason, that withdrawal code ends up being the exact same, and their withdrawal, again, the next, their withdrawal and a dropout the next year. And then their dropout the next year. Graduation rate functions differently in that you get your cohort membership in their ninth grade year, right? And the only time a ninth grader is no longer adjoined to that school district is if another school district enrolls them and takes responsibility for them. And then that gets not majored across a single year, that gets majored across four years. So let's say we have 5,000 students that are ninth graders with us, and 100 of them leave us in their freshman year, right? That means you think we're only responsible for 4,900, but that's not the case. The case is if 50 of them get picked up by other school districts, those school districts are charter schools, those places are responsible for them. If the other 50 don't get picked up by charter schools or other school districts or leave to out-of-state with the right documentation on our behalf, they stay, if they don't, they stay on our rolls. And then they stay on our rolls permanently for four years. And so is it possible that a student could be a dropout in a single year and then four years later count against our graduation rate? The answer is yes. But it is also possible that they could be a dropout in a single year and then not count against our graduation rate four years later. It just depends on what the situation and circumstance is. So a lot of people think if your dropout rate's 5% to put in simple terms, then your graduation rate's 95%. They are not, because they add to 100%. They are not equivalent because they're calculated across different terms. Dr. O'Reilly, did I do okay?
You did okay.
All right.
So yeah, it's a one-year rate, and it goes 7 through 12, first cohort of students going through for four years. So, and as we talk about goals, we did a graduation goal that really we could only affect the 12th graders for because the prior three years are history unless we track them down. So I just want to make clear to everybody that the difference between the two, before we have no other questions, we move to our next item.
Dr. O'Reilly, Mrs. Hutchinson has been trying to jump in, and she's taking herself off mute, so I think she has a few things to say.
Okay. I have no way of knowing she is unless she speaks up.
I will, yes.
So President Hutchinson.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. I know that you can't.
Okay, one second. We're having hard-
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask if we could get data, the disaggregated data, I appreciate. But I was wondering if we could get it by school, by our secondary schools, if we could get data for our junior highs and our high schools. And in line with that, I'm wondering if we could have, at this point in the meeting, superintendency talk about some of the means by which our dropout rate has dropped. What are some of the significant programs, actions, strategies that have been taken by our schools so as to impact the dropout rate?
Dr. Forless?
President Hutchinson, I will start off, and then I'll hand it over to Dr. Mallorwine, who can expand upon that. Knowing that the board goal is, that we are focused on graduation rate to meet the board goal, our high school principals have been very, very, very focused on increasing graduation rate. And as Doctors Strom and O'Reilly talked about, there is a relationship between dropout and graduation rate. So some of the things that you've heard us talk about is that each of our high schools have a model that is similar, they're similar in nature, but they meet the unique needs of students. So for example, at Red Mountain High School is the core program that is designed to keep kids in school. At Mesa High, we've heard about the Gold Academy, Dobson and Westwood and Skyline. And Mountain View also have models that they are working towards. But all of that is designed to keep kids in school and catch them before they feel that they have lost hope. And so keeping them in the game either by correcting behavior challenges or academic challenges, that is the design of those programs. Would you like to add on to that, Dr. Mallorwine?
I mean, I, thank you, Superintendent Forless. That was, pretty much summed it up, I think. I think that we learned so much from the Gold Academy that was originally implemented in Mesa High School that we scaled it in the other schools. And what we saw on that is creating that sense of belonging, creating that connection with our more marginalized kids, our behavior kids and our kids that generally perform poorly, kept them in school. And to keep them in school, obviously, they don't drop out. What we've seen with that was through the collaboration of our seven, eight principals with our high school principals, we at Taylor Junior High implemented that this year and had some successes. Two, like I think he had about an 85% decrease in fights just by creating a sense of belonging, creating a little place where kids felt like they connected to Taylor. Now, we are going to scale that program across our junior highs because we know that our junior high kids will move into our high school, and we think that keeping them connected to a junior high, then connected to a high school, now instead of just one school will help us because we know that eight to nine, we see kids leave our district. So there's a little bit of continuation that we're going to do there, we learned from that program. Superintendent Forless?
And I would just add, we dedicated Estor funds that we made summer school free for the last three years for students in 7th through 12th grade. And so if they were credit deficient, that they had an opportunity to take courses and to stay in the game and to decrease both dropout rate as well as increased graduation
Dr. Mallorwine, and that's awesome, the free summer school. I just have to say how awesome that is. What percentage did you say of fights you reduced?
I just kind of shot from the hip there, about 80 to 85%.
80 to 85% reduction in fights?
Jeremy, is that close? Am I close with that? Oh, okay, so we're maybe 48%. I overshot. I was pretty excited about the data when it came.
I mean, reducing fights to decrease in fights is incre- Yeah, I mean, reducing fights to decrease in fights is incredible. That's, that's great. And I think, I'm sure we can continue it, continue that trend.
And I would add that the model is to, to have kids, we want to reduce out of school suspension time. So students that would have been referred for out of school suspension are now in school in a supervised environment at the Taylor Academy. And so it's keeping kids connected in school because we know that when they're out of school, the gaps just grow.
In addition, I think that a lot of work that we've done to decrease the dropout radius to increase the attractiveness of the academic environment, Ms. Walden spoke to it briefly a few minutes ago, we've created a more engaging classroom. We, we know that our kids really struggle to be motivated if they don't have choice. We know our kids struggle to be motivated if they don't see relevancy in the, in the content. And so with the help of teaching and learning, for the past two years, we've done kind of an overhaul on our instructional vision, which takes some time to take root, but we are seeing that students that have a little more agency, have a little more, see a little more relevancy in the content. Well, I believe that is helping us keep our kids in school as well.
Dr. Strom?
Yeah, the second question Mrs. Hutchinson addressed was by school, by junior high and high school. We have that data. We have typically attached it in executive content. And so I don't know if we did that this time, but it's as simple as getting it to the right places to attach it. So that's easy.
Dr. Strom, I'll add at my status report this Thursday.
Okay, and we have one more question?
Yeah, when, when a family, if they move a student to homeschooling, won't that show, if they don't go to the county superintendent's office and fill out the form that they're homeschooling, won't that show as a dropout too? Like we don't, do we know if some people are leaving for homeschooling?
It, A, shows as a dropout and B, it hurts our graduation rate if they don't register with the county superintendent. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And they could be followed up as truant because they're not in school as, if, if that happens. Any other questions? Okay, we have completed the, the discussion of the dropout and we'll go to the next item, progress towards board goals and proficiency data. Dr. Forless, or do you want me to turn it right over to Dr. Strom?
Clerk, Clerk O'Reilly, members of the board, we are going to take you through the progress towards our board goals that our board set back in July of last year. I'll skip over the second slide, it is a summary of the board goals, you'll hear them as we go through these graphs and charts. So in terms of graduation rate goal, the graduation rate goal was to reach 83% of students graduating by June 3rd of 2024. We have reached 82.25%. So we're a little short of that board goal by about .75%. To put in perspective, we have about 4,400 members of that cohort. 1% of that cohort therefore is about 40 students, 44 students. And 44 students multiplied by .7, by, by three quarters is 30 kids. So we missed it by about 30 students graduating out of a cohort of 4,444. We certainly desire to make board goals, but we are also, and so we are reflecting on better practices to get better at next year, to make the board goal that's set for next year on this. But we do also want to celebrate that we did have an increase in graduation rate from about 81% up to 82%. And we do think that the work we're doing with making sure students are engaged in a learning process is going to continue to drive that graduation rate goal up. And I will tell you that the work we're trying to do at three of the schools next year that's innovative to Mesa Public Schools and block scheduling are certainly something that could probably result in that, I think, until you get the data, the empirical data, you do not know, but I just think there's going to be strong support of getting kids credits in areas they're interested in learning, which is going to help the graduation rate goal over the course of the next couple of years. Of course, it's a four-year graduation rate, so that won't show up until, you know, that block scheduling effect may not show up until 2030 with that four-year graduation.
Or it will show up slowly.
Slowly, yes.
It was 2.25% of the students or we focus on dropout. But a question here, just a comment on this so the public understands. The board sets goals annually, so these are the board goals, what the board wanted to help achieve and we need to talk about why we and the leadership did or didn't achieve the goals. But why did we set June? Because we know students take summer school, we know we can have through August to get the students to, to graduate. Because at some point we have to stop and look and say, how did we do this year? And so the board goal is through June. That is not the school's goal, that is not the, that is not our aspiration for students. Our, our aspiration is as many as possible graduate this year, which is through August, I believe, on the way the state calculates it, maybe early September. So it's the June, we compare it to the prior year June, and we do it because the board is saying, how did we do in terms of what we did, how we allocated to schools, how we supported different things? And it's really so we can reflect on our, on our performance and what we wanted, which are student outcomes. So I just want to make sure people understand what it says graduation goal, that's our graduation goal with a June compared to the prior June, so that we can just say, how do we do knowing that even more kids will graduate between now and the end of the calculation period? So I just want to mention that.
And, and Dr. O'Reilly, if I could add, I, I, with our efforts throughout the summer and when the state will post in October, the graduation rate at that time, I just want to make sure that our public knows that June 3rd is not a cutoff date. It is, it is, it is a date that the board, you're right, established, but Mesa Public Schools does not give up on kids. We keep working with kids and try to give them as many opportunities as possible. And that rate will, excuse me, that rate will go up because of the efforts of our staff and the opportunities that our district provides our kids, particularly through an excellent summer school program. And, and that, those efforts are appreciated by not only our students, but their families. We don't give up on kids.
I totally agree, President Hutchinson, and we offer them five years and six years, so we, they can come back and they do, many students. So with that.
Yep, so, so the next couple of slides, I need to be clear, are not related to the board goal. But we've been asked questions in prior graduation rate presentations, I think last time it was by member Davis, who talked about, hey, can we look at graduation rate a little differently? And so this may help frame for the public how you can take different views at graduation rate to understand the data and the mobility of Mesa Public Schools a little bit better. Let me see if I can do this slide justice. This was created by, I gave the, we gave the idea to Arnie, we gave the idea to Arnie and Arnie went to work. So let's see if we can do this justice. In our 2024 cohort, there are 4,444 members. These are, these are the kids that started with us four years ago, and maybe not four years ago, they could have came to us three years ago, they could have came to us two years ago. The point is, these are kids that the Arizona Department of Education are saying Mesa Public Schools is responsible for. We're responsible for 4,444 kids, they're considered cohort 24 kids. Your cohort as a student is set when you first enter your freshman year of high school. So let's go back to their freshman year of high school. We have grade nine in 2020, 2021. What we know when we look at our 4,444 members of that cohort, 59 of those members left us in 2021 and we're still responsible for them. We're still responsible for them. What does that mean? That means they left our system in 2020, 2021 and they're not picked up by anywhere in the state because in the state, the state picks them up, they could possibly be homeschooled and not registered with the superintendent's office, right? The county superintendent's office, that is an option here. Or frequently, these 59 kids go out of state and we just don't have the right records to show that they went out of state and we can't by, by what our guidance is from Arizona Department of Education, change their withdrawal code without having the right records. So there's 59 kids that left us in their ninth grade year that we're still accountable for. Then there's another 131 kids that left us in their sophomore year. We have another 229 kids that left us in their 11th grade year that we're still accountable for. All total, when you subtract that sum, 59 plus 131 plus 229, doing it quick in my head, I think that's 419. When you take 4,444 minus 419, we only had 4,025 kids that we could have possibly graduated this year. That's all we could have. So no matter what, 4,025 divided by 4,444 is our max graduation rate, which is listed right there at 90.6%, right? We actually graduated 3,613 of those 4,025 kids. You take 3,613 divided by 4,025, that's our seniors that we could have possibly graduated and how many crossed the line? Does that make sense to everyone? So there's another way of viewing graduation rate and that's through the lens of there are kids that, that left us in 2021 who we're still accountable for because they haven't re-enrolled somewhere else. And are we exploring right now programs and people that we can get into partnership with to go back and try to hunt down these kids and say, get back in school? Yes, we think we have a public responsibility and a community partnership within this community to try to go attract those kids back into the school system. So that's that slide, just a different way to view it. So if we would have graduated all 4,000, I want to be clear, if we would have graduated all 4,025 of our kids that were actually with us during this 12th grade year, our graduation rate would have only been 90.6%. It's one reason the governing board goal at 83% makes sense because we still can make our governing board goal, but we were never going to get above 90.6%, right? That's that slide, different way of viewing it. Another way to view this is not by looking backwards, but by looking forwards. We started 2021 with 5,584 freshmen, 5,584 freshmen throughout our, all our high schools. One of the things that shocks people a lot is how mobile students are in a market-based education system, which is what Arizona is. And that is students enroll in school A and then next year they enroll in school B, next year they enroll in school C. When you look at a student throughout their K-12 career, it's not uncommon to see a kid enrolled in eight, nine, 10 different schools throughout a 13-year period. Automatically, they're going to enroll in three different schools if they stay with the schools, right, in the system, elementary, junior high, high school, right? But you're, we're starting to see, you know, this has been since 1994 when charter schools came about, we're starting to see schools and kids enrolled in six, seven, eight, nine, 10 different schools across 13 years. So what's that number down below? We have 2,576 kids that were annually enrolled with us. We had them on our books at some point in time, their ninth grade year, 10th grade year, 11th grade year and 12th grade year. That 46.1%, what that means is out of the 5,584 kids, only 2,576 kids, 46.1% of them were kids that we experienced educational interaction with for four years in a row, okay? Now, this does not include kids that were with us freshman year, left us sophomore year, came back to us junior year. Does that happen? That happens a lot. This does not include kids that were with us freshman year, left us for two years, came back in our senior year. That happens a lot, right? This, I just want to make sure what we're measuring here, we're measuring kids that were annually enrolled with us for four straight years. That's 46.1% of kids. When we only look at those 2,576 kids, 2,511 of them graduated. That's a 97.5% chance that if you stay annually enrolled with Mesa Public Schools for four years in a row, you will graduate on time in four years. Now, the very first way we showed you the governing board goal is a state-defined and federally-defined way to calculate graduation rate. What we're trying to do here, based on questions of the governing board, questions of fellow superintendency members, is just show people there's different perspectives in looking at the data. And so when we slice these things with different perspectives and different ways and conditionally, if you know Bayes' theorem, and conditionally differently according to Bayes' theorem, right, we get different types of data points. All of these are which are important. When a kid gets on our books, it's important we graduate them. When a kid enrolls with us freshman year, it's important we get them re-enrolled during their sophomore year, re-enrolled during their junior year and re-enrolled during their high school year because we know the mobility research is clear. And that is kids that stay more consistently enrolled in schools in the same school system are oftentimes more successful. So just a different way of looking at graduation rate. And the only reason we put these two slides in there is because we've been, we've had board member questions in the prior board member sessions, our board sessions. All right.
But that does surprise me that only 46% of the students who we got as ninth graders stayed with us for all four years. So that they left at some point and not all of those would be moving out of town. So that, that suggests other goals and other focus for the district. Because if 54% are leaving us, we can't control all of that, but maybe we can impact some of that.
That is, the questions that go through our minds, Dr. O'Reilly, I will tell you for perspective, having worked in several Arizona school districts, in less mobile areas, and by the way, mobility tracks often with socioeconomic status, not always, but often tracks with socioeconomic status, in less mobile districts, that number will still be 60 to 80%. So what percentage of kids that started with you in front, with, as freshmen are annually enrolled throughout four years, that, I've seen that number be between 60 and 80%. So that's a little lower than I expected. It's, it's not as shocking knowing that out of the East Valley School Districts, Mesa Public Schools happens to have the opportunity to serve a wide degree of socioeconomic status individuals, right? So it's not shocking from that perspective, but what I will tell you is there's room to work and get better at re-attracting students back into our system year over year over year, which is where I think your mind was. All right, on to the next set of governing board goals. So this governing board goal right here is three-pronged. Let me see if I can take this from right to left. So we're going to start on the right graph. The first part of the governing board goal was to raise proficiency in ELA and math by 2% in the district, okay? Please note that we can have a really intense discussion on proficiency and what proficiency means according to state standardized exams. State standardized exams measure proficiency as determined as college readiness, not literacy, as college readiness, not numeracy. There's a distinct difference. And, and so there are kids that are partially proficient, that don't show up in proficiency rates, that are literate human beings that can go out and apply for jobs and read and consume information, but they're just a little bit below the threshold of what it means to be college-ready in the proficiency mark. So when we look at ELA, we have 37.4% of the students in 21, 22 that passed exams, this is state exams, third through eighth grade, which is now called double ASA. ACT Aspire in the ninth grade and ACT in the 11th grade. In 22, 23, it slightly rose in ELA to 37.6%. And this last year, we dropped to 37.1% by about a half percent on pass rates on exams. I will tell you, we have another presentation right after this on grade levels, and there are some celebratory things at certain grade levels in ELA, and then there's some areas to work on at other grade levels in ELA. In mathematics, we had 29.9% pass rate on state exams. In 21, 22, it rose to 30.8% and now it dropped this last year to 29.1% in, in mathematics on these state exams. So that is board goal number two as it relates to 2% increase in proficiency. Now we're going to move to the left and let me just get through these last two and then we'll take questions. Another board goal was what percent of your students increased their proficiency if they were partially proficient or minimally proficient, okay? Now let me explain a little something to you about minimally proficient. Minimally proficient students are students that are below the college readiness benchmark for making proficiency. And then within minimally proficient, there's this thing called move on when reading, mauer or mower, depending on who you talk to. And it's this little band in minimally proficient, and those are the kids that the kid, that the state's saying, hey, these kids are, are in a category or band that's so low that we don't know if we want them moving on to the next grade level. Does that make sense to you? That classification of kids would be the kids that we really know prior are struggling with literacy period, right? So minimally, this, this metric measures minimally proficient kids that go to partially proficient, so they got to jump categorical levels. Partial, minimally proficient kids that go to proficient, minimally proficient kids that go to highly proficient. It also measures partially proficient kids that went to proficient and partially proficient kids that went to highly proficient. And so what we know in ELA is 23% of kids that were in the minimally proficient band and partially proficient band made at least a one categorical increase in proficiency. In math, 17% of the kids made at least a one categorical growth in proficiency from minimally upwards or partially upwards. This goal was purposefully set, and let me explain that to you a little bit. Why would you only want 20, the goal, board goal was 20%. Why would you only want 20% of kids increasing band levels, categorical levels? Because we look at empirical data. What we know- What we know about growth is growth is not linear, right? It doesn't just go like this. It's not a linear process where I grew by two units one year, so I'm going to grow by two units the next year and grow by two. Growth is a curvature, I mean, it's a curvature sinusoidal battle, right? You grow a little bit one year, you decline a little bit the next year. I'm talking at the student level. You grow a lot the next year, you decline a little bit, right? And so it's a sinusoidal curve in terms of growth. That's the first thing we know. Second thing we know is that to make proficiency, and this is widely studied, it takes time, a lot of time to make college-ready proficiency. It takes three to five years to make college-ready proficiency. And so I will tell you, studied in other districts, you know, we often had a single year rate of 5% of minimally proficient students moving to proficient within one year. One out of over 20 kids making that hop in another district that I happened to work in. So why was this set on empirical data? The 20% mark was approximately from historical years, what we've had in the past. So what we were saying is we want to do better than what we've done in the past. We met that metric in ELA. We performed a little under in mathematics. We need to get better on the mathematics side of things. Okay. Governing board goal, the other one, was that at least 70%. So these are all proficiency metrics, all proficiency metrics. The other governing board goal was at least 70% of our schools increased proficiency by at least 2%. So in ELA, we had 33% of our schools increased proficiency by at least 2%. That's in blue. And another 22% of our schools increased proficiency but didn't make the 2% mark. And then in math, 16% of our schools increased proficiency by at least 2%. And 13% of schools increased proficiency but didn't make the 2% mark. So the general trends across all this is we have, still have work to do in English Language Arts. We adopted some curriculum that we need to make sure that we're, the integrity of implementation continues to be successful throughout the district. And we need to ensure that we continue to focus on our status math curriculum and increasing math proficiency in the district. Because if there was a general trend across the district, across our tested areas, right, it would be in mathematics. And I will tell you once again, proficiency in mathematics is ready for college-level algebra when they're often going to college. This does not mean that kids can't add 2 plus 2 to get 4. There's a difference between proficiency and numeracy. And this test measures readiness in, in college-level mathematics. These tests measure readiness in college-level mathematics.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
It, we're, our tests are measuring the state standards, right? So those are, the standards are set as set for our, our students.
Correct. That is 100% correct. Yep.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the board members?
So I do have a few just comments as I looked at what we have here and before, and I did talk to our superintendent. The thing that I am the most encouraged about is where we're looking to improve and what we're looking at. And specifically, as a board member, it has not been lost on us. And I give Dr. O'Reilly a lot of credit, I think, from year one on the board, bringing a special attention to our math crisis that we have going on as we were looking at adopting our English and our everything for our children and reading. So I think it's imperative, imperative that we continue to look at those resources that support as we have done this English adoption and what, whatever saying, ELA adoption? And doing that and going forward with that and having all these things that support, I also know that it's very important for us to have the supports that support the professionals who are actually putting all these things in place. And I often hear as our former board member Laura Ellison would bring to the table, when we look at the science of reading, there is many professionals raised their hand who want to get in the classes, who want to take the, take all of the advantages to get the professional development. There's not enough spots. There's not enough supports for them to actually get the training to help our children to go forward. So I do want the public to know that these are the type of things that we're spending countless hours and professionals are looking to do. So when we come to our public and we're talking about the funds and what's needed for support, you actually have professionals who want to get the best tools, best resources to help our students in areas in which we know they're struggling in. But again, it comes to resources. Where are there those supports is why we call upon our public and the system to do that. So I'm really excited about one bright spot with having our Department of Education working toward student-centered outcomes and student-focused governance. Because it is really about time that we get the support. So that's as we look at our students, that put us back in a place, the professionals who teach need the resources to be able to help our students. So yes, we see these things and do know that your continual support, when I say that, all of us that's in the room, is how we continue to ensure that our students can be not only more literate, but competent and ready for these 21st century jobs and all these things that's happening. So it's just really a call for me to, as we look at these sovereign numbers, to say, we continue need, continue to need the public support and those who realize that the resources are needed for those professionals that's in the place to actually get the support in, in the form of professional development and tools and resources. Because I can't tell you how many times we as board members have come together for those innovation grants and wanted to give everyone and award everyone the money to supply the things that they asked for in their classrooms and just weren't able to do so and were grateful for all who had it. So when you look at teachers still in our state spending on the average $500 a year on their classroom, these are the things we put forward. As I listen to, you know, people talking about the schools being flush with cash, we know that resources are still needed to be able to help our professionals, be the professionals that we call them on to be. So when I see that I am focused on our children and focused on their needs, but also looking at both the skills and talent that want to help our children and then the need for the additional undergirding supports.
Other comments, questions? President Hutchinson, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, yes, thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. One of the things that I, I wanted to ask superintendency, and I guess my questions would be directed to Dr. Strom. I always wonder, as we measure proficiency, have we, have we looked at the validity of the assessment tool? At times, I know that state testing has come under some scrutiny. And I'm wondering if superintendency has heard anything at the state level on the validity of the assessment? And then secondly, I'm wondering also, when we look from year to year, we are not measuring the same students. When we look from third grade to third grade, say in year 22, 23 to 23, 24, we are looking at two different groups of third graders. And I'm wondering, are we taking a look? Are we tracking cohorts of students? Are we looking at the third graders and their scores in the fourth grade? Then their scores in the fifth grade? Then their scores in the sixth grade? Because I, I true, I know that when the board wrote the goals, one of the reasons why we included the growth measurement was that we wanted to make sure that we never give up on kids, that we always make sure that we are working with individual students and, and tracking their progress, tracking their improvement. Are we doing it at the grade levels?
So I think I'm going to defer the second question to the next presentation because I will make sure I look back on it, but there's some slides where I can really talk about the cohort analysis and looking at growth. Please note, there's several ways to measure growth. One way to measure it's called categorical growth. That's how the board goal is set. That's a great measure of growth. Another way to measure growth is through student growth percentiles. That's run through a statistical method called quantile regression. It's what the state runs. We do not have our student growth percentiles back for this year from the state. They have to run it at a state level because in regression modeling, if we run that regression model against our own data, we're going to naturally split our district in half. Half our people lying above the regression line, half our people lying below the regression line. So we're awaiting student growth percentiles to measure growth. There's also hierarchical linear models out there that are, that measure what they call value-added growth. We don't run those in Arizona. We could run those internally, but we choose not to because once again, they're a regression model and they divide the district data in half with half your kids making growth, half the kids not making growth. So let me defer that question a little bit to the next presentation because we do measure that and you're going to see it in the next presentation. The, the very first question on the validity of state assessments, there are psychometric reports that come out regarding the validity of state assessments that are administered throughout the state every year. I will tell you that in comparison to the standards the tests are supposed to measure, they are very valid exams. In fact, they're not only valid exams, they're reliable exams. Reliability meaning if this kid takes the test in month two and then comes back and takes the test in month six, it's going to be a pretty decent, reliable measure that the kid, you know, is performing within a knowledge set or a standard area of measurement, if you want to talk statistically of where the test expects them to perform. The more difficult conversation on the validity of tests centers around people understanding the scaling process and the item response theory process that goes in and setting scale scores and then setting standardized cut scores for where proficiency is. And let me see if I can explain this to you in, in, in light terms. Let's say the cut score for a student to score proficiency in third grade is around 3,500 in terms of a scale score. That might be like a kid getting 26 of the 45 questions right on an exam. So 3,500. The way that 3,500 proficiency cut score mark gets set is through either an Angoff method, a modified Angoff method, or a benchmark method. The state has traditionally used a benchmark method of experts coming in and saying, this is where we think the cut score for proficiency should be. They get a group of ELA experts and say, yep, this is where it should be. They all set it individually, they average it out, they do some calculations and they say, the cut score for proficiency is 3,500. Well, a kid that scores 3496 is right below the cut score. And a kid that scores 3504 is right above the cut score. And one might have answered 27 questions right and another one might have answered 25 questions right. And in terms of statistical speak, with standard area of measurement calculated, they're the exact same student. In other words, I can't tell you whether the 25 out of 20, a 45 student, the kid that got 25 questions out of 45 questions right, is any different than the kid that got 27 out of 45 questions right. But one's going to fall above the threshold and one's going to fall below the threshold. And that's why it's so important to actually monitor cohort data that you referenced because the battle in districts is about keeping kids right above the cusp progressing forward and keeping kids right below the cusp progressing forward. Because if your kids above the cusp regress backwards a little bit, remember, growth is sinusoidal, if they regress backwards a little bit while the kids below the cusp or move forwards a little bit, in the end, that's a wash to the district. And so we need to be extremely careful with how we interpret averages in these data sets and very aware that the most important data that these tests suggest is not how we average them out, not we, how we roll them into the aggregate, but the most important data is at the student level. What it means for that individual student and what pathway we need to set those individual students on in terms of their intervention supports that we provide them in a tier two and tier three fashion. And really important in this district, what type of tier one supports, which is the general instruction, whether it's in small group or whether it's in large group direct instruction, what type of tier one supports we're getting to those students. So that's a little outside the validity conversation, but it's really important to mention at this point because fluctuations that are within the standard error of the measurement get captured in aggregate data. And I don't think the general public understands those nuances that occur in standardized test, testing aggregate data.
And President Hutchinson, I don't know whether that answered your question or went way beyond it. I, I don't think a lot of the technical details would be one you'd ask about. Was that a sufficient answer to your question?
Yes. However, however, the mic for Dr. Strom is a little bit garbled, but so I, it, I caught most of it, so I appreciate his explanation. Thank you, Dr. Riley, for checking.
Thank you. And, and just my response to it a little bit is, we as a board want kids to be proficient. The test score is just one way of giving us feedback on that. And I think what our public wants is our kids to be proficient in reading and math and English and be successful when they leave here. So all of those things, yes, there are all these statistical details, but our eye is on proficiency, getting kids to proficiency. Other questions or comments? No questions or comments? Okay. So I'll just add with, these were our goals. We didn't make our goals, that's how it is. We have to figure out what we need to do better in the coming year. And what we do is set policies and, and oversee budget. And as Member Seer said, how do we support the professionals? How do we make sure they have the resources? And I'd like to go back and look at how we're allocating the resources for the coming year. So school aides, we, we didn't increase that budget by 2%, but we increased salaries. So maybe we have to go back and look at, do we have to make sure that schools have enough supports, both, both with teachers and teacher support? And are we really focusing on those? And take this as feedback that we need to do better. We as a board, we as, as leadership, we as a district. So that, that's what I take away from this is we, we set a goal which we thought was rigorous but attainable. We didn't attain it. So how do we, how do we attain it next year? So that, that's my response. Okay. Any other comments?
I just have a comment about testing too. You know, we, we do assessments, we do testing, but every time we're, we're testing and teachers are testing, that's less time they have to instruct and everyone knows that. But something that, something else we can look at. I know one of the assessments was removed last year, but you know, making sure that when we're doing assessments and testing, it's not too time-consuming, that we're not invading the time that teachers have to actually instruct and make sure the testing's very strategic and, and limited at the right moments. I think I've heard even feedback like December was a really testing-heavy month, that there was feedback from teachers that they felt like during that time, they weren't really teaching at all, they were just testing. So some, something else we can look at to, to set new goals and, you know, and how to, how to use our resources in the classroom wisely, which I know you all can do, but we can do it better, of course.
Member Walden, the hardest part in the assessment conversation since No Child Left Behind in 2002 has become that assessment for learning is extremely important. But we get into these conversations on limiting testing based on standardized assessments, right? And we're liking that. We know that self-quizzing, right? The ability for kids to self-quiz themselves and see where they're at in their knowledge and try to get that neural pathway to build. And we know that teachers quizzing kids on a frequent basis are really good learning pathways when we're talking about assessment, informative assessment for learning. And then we also know that the testing data that's standardized, that helps us make board goals and make judgment calls about where the system is moving is important. But if we're to rank order those in terms of, you know, if we're going to talk about what we're going to remove to ensure teachers have the proper time to instruct kids, I think educationally, you'd get a lot of educators telling you to work backwards. And that is, let's talk state standardized assessments, right? And then let's work backwards because testing for learning, informative assessment are so important. That's why Cornell notes, right, have the note-taking process where you fold over the note because this left-hand column, you're supposed to be quizzing yourself on whether you know what's underneath on the right-hand column because self-quizzing is such a right-hand column, because self-quizzing is such a valuable practice in building those neural pathways. So the conversation around testing is super nuanced. And I want to honor the fact that, yeah, we do over-test kids. And yeah, when you pull a tree out of the ground and check its roots over and over again, you're eventually gonna kill the tree, right? Is the analogy I got from a principal about twenty-five years ago when he was first entering in education. So I want to honor all that fact, but it's a nuanced conversation between assessment for learning and assessment of learning that we continue need to develop in the cycle of learning in Mesa Public Schools.
And when you referenced your next presentation, that would not be tonight, correct?
It's, it's on here for tonight.
Oh, okay.
It'll be brief and it's really on here because the calendar was set to put it on here. And I can promise you, we will try to fly.
Okay. I just...
So, so right here, we're gonna start, so we're gonna cover state standardized assessment results, double ASA, ACT Aspire, ACT. And right away, we want to start with the twenty-three results from the Arizona Auditor General Report, which show us that in mathematics, for us as a district, Mesa Public Schools, the public can look this up on their own. We're at thirty-two percent pass rate in, in the district. Our peer group, large school districts throughout the state, we're at twenty-seven percent and the statewide average is at thirty-four percent. You can look at the English Language Arts exams and the Science exams as well. And what we know is our goal is to improve every single year. By that percentage mark set by the board, you can see why two percent probably made sense from empirical data last year, was to catch up to the state of Arizona. And we want to continue to improve in comparison to our peer group and cruise to the state. And even at a student level, we need to continue to improve to ensure these kids are passing those state exams. So here's what happened in twenty-three, twenty-four. The blue bars are predicted value. It's a judgment of whether our assessments are working well to predict or not. What you'll generally see between the blue bar and the red bars is that the, our prediction assessments that are used throughout the district have gotten better over the last three years. And one of the reasons they've probably gotten better is because double ASA's first year of implementation was three years ago. And then your assessment systems within a district slowly catch up to what the assessment at a state level is testing. So this is grade nine. And I will tell you on the validity side of things, Member Hutchinson, the least valid of the exams is likely the ACT exam at the, at the state level. And that's because our state standards are not perfectly aligned to the ACT exam, which is the ACT, which is the ACT assessment. The state strategically made a choice to go to ACT as a test. I personally, my own educational philosophy, kind of agree with it. It's a college entrance exam that allows students to get into college. The disconnect there is our standards in Algebra II, Geometry and Algebra I are not necessarily perfectly aligned with the ACT exam. So this data, if we were to talk about validity, would be the data that I'd go, ah, this is maybe the, the most suspect to the validity concern. And you'll see that we, an ACT Aspire hit a twenty-three percent rate in mathematics at the ninth grade level, a little up from the prior year, down from the twenty-four percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the ACT exam, we're gonna probably have to make some choices on whether we need to teach to the test on the ACT because of the fact that we need to make sure we cover the standards. As an example, trigonometry is included on the ACT exam. Do we include trigonometry in our, in our standards? Because the state standards don't necessarily require trigonometry until your pre-calculus year. So there's decisions to make there from a, a curricular perspective. In ELA nine, you have a drop of five percent in ACT Aspire and a drop of two percent in grade eleven ACT. Once again, need to think about whether we're gonna align to the ACT Aspire and ACT and go beyond the state standards in those subjects. Now, we're gonna move into six-eight mathematics. Six-eight, more valid, we teach to the state standards directly and the test tests the state standards directly. And you can see that in sixth grade, our ELA performance was comparable to the prior years. In seventh grade, it rose by three percent last year and then dropped back down by two percent this year. In eighth grade, it went up by five percent in ELA and then down by four percent. Once again, the blue bars are only bars that tell us how our December testing, January testing tool predicts the, the proficiency of students. So that's just the blue-red comparison. Then you have ELA in sixth through eighth grade. Oh, sorry, was that math and I said ELA? That was math sixth through eighth grade. In ELA, we have an increase in sixth grade from thirty-eight percent of the kids passing the exam in twenty-one, twenty-two, up to forty-three, up to forty-four. And you can see in seventh grade, it went from thirty-nine percent passing to thirty-six percent passing in state level at thirty-six percent. And then eighth grade, it went from thirty percent passing to thirty-two, back to twenty-nine percent passing. And then math, third through fifth grade, we went from thirty-six percent passing to thirty-one, forty-one percent passing, back down to thirty-eight percent passing. The same trends in the board goals, you can see that we struggled a little more in mathematics than we did with ELA. And then in fourth grade, thirty-six percent passing to thirty-six percent passing to thirty-four percent passing. And then you can see fifth grade there as well. In ELA, for third grade, we went from thirty-nine percent passing to forty percent passing, back to thirty-eight. And then in fourth grade, we went from forty-one percent passing to forty-one percent passing to forty-five percent passing. And then in fifth grade, you can see the thirty-six percent down to thirty-four, up to thirty-seven. One thing, this gets into your second question, President Hutchinson, which is monitoring cohorts and student-level data. We don't only monitor cohorts and how they're moving from third to fourth, fourth to fifth, fifth to sixth, we monitor schools and how they're, how they're performing year over year. And then we set up summer analysis sessions where we go through and we go, okay, how do we divert resources in such a fashion to support schools that need supports so that we can get them on track to improving their proficiency scores? In fact, Ms. Mesa, Ms. Mann, Dr. Mallowine, Dr. Foris and myself have these constant, constant conversations in, in June and July with where our data's at. So this is an example of a school, Robson Elementary School, where their ELA proficiency has risen from twenty-three percent. This is across all grade levels, so third through sixth grade combined, up to thirty-six percent. In mathematics, it's gone from fourteen percent up to twenty percent. And then I put this in here because I had a conversation with Clerk O'Reilly yesterday and I want to make sure I level-set prior to getting into the ropes in data. This is how we monitor at a student level. We have move-up, keep-up and catch-up data. Move-up data are kids that are minimally proficient, that we're trying to move up to partially proficient, proficient or highly proficient. Says it right there on the slide. Catch-up data are kids that are partially proficient, that we're trying to catch up to proficiency and highly proficient levels. Keep-up proficiency are kids that are proficient or highly proficient already as they came into that school year and we're telling the schools, keep them proficient, right? Keep them proficient. What we know throughout the district, and this is once again why, why the twenty percent mark was a board goal, is that of the kids that were proficient and highly proficient, we have about twenty percent of them that are right around that cusp. This is why the comment earlier was really important, that thirty-five hundred comment, right? They're right around the cusp and it takes work to keep them right above the cusp, right? And that's the, the twenty percent of kids that are proficient or highly proficient are generally the kids that, that then next year fall to partially proficient, are generally the kids that are right near the cusp when we look at the data. I'll give you an example of, of this. We have a school in this district, right? That ninety-eight percent of the kids that came to them proficient in the prior year stayed proficient, right? It, it models, because we're in a school choice environment, a lot like the Basa Schools, which is a charter school, where at the Basa Schools, ninety-eight percent of their kids will stay proficient year over year over year. But once again, these students are not students near the cusp. These students are students that are well above the cusp. And so when you look at this eighty percent of students in ELA that are proficient or highly proficient, or seventy-four percent of students in math that are proficient or highly proficient, who maintain their proficiency status, we need to know that doesn't just include highly proficient students that are likely to stay highly proficient. It also includes kids right around the cusp. And our goal is to get the keep-up percentage as high as we possibly can. Because if we can get the keep-up percentage super high and we can get a bunch of kids to catch up out of partially proficient, that's when we're gonna start seeing proficiency rise throughout the district. So the reason I'm sharing these numbers is because this is district-wide data. So out of the move-up category, twenty percent of our kids in ELA moved up. So they were minimally proficient in the prior year and we're looking at them this year and they've moved up at least one categorical level. At the catch-up level, in ELA, thirty percent of our kids moved from, right, being partially proficient up to proficiency. Well, why didn't you increase your proficiency by thirty percent then? Well, because at the proficiency level, some kids stay proficient and some kids fall right below the cusp by answering one or two or three more questions wrong in the next year's assessment. So here's Robson's data. And just remember, twenty, thirty, eighty, twenty, thirty, eighty in ELA. And so we monitor this at a school level. And in ELA, you can see their move-up percentage at Robson with minimally proficient, proficient students was twenty-four percent. Their catch-up percentage, district was thirty percent, they're at fifty-two percent. Their keep-up percentage was at, district was eighty percent, they're at eighty-four percent. So across all three categories, Robson is doing a pretty good job of not only keeping up kids, because they're better than the district average, but also catching up kids and moving up kids. In mathematics, let's go back a slide. In mathematics, member seventeen, nineteen, seventy-four, that's the district averages. So then you come down here and move up, they're at twenty, a little better than the district average. And catch-up, they're a little bit below the district average. And then keep-up, they're a little bit above the district average. So overall, at Robson Elementary School, in five of the six categories, monitoring students longitudinally, not just third grade, different third graders to different third graders, but monitoring students that are third graders that become fourth graders or fourth graders that become fifth graders. We know based on the data, we have some celebratory notes at Robson Elementary School. This is just one of the schools that we have celebrations with. Obviously, from the data, we got a lot of schools that we need to work with to get better. That's why we had proficiency decline in ELA in mathematics, ELA by half a percent, math by one point seven percent. But we do want you to know, Member Hutchinson, based on your question, this is what I was referencing earlier, that we do monitor kids across years to make sure our principals know who, what kids are coming in proficient, what kids are coming in partially proficient, what kids are coming in minimally proficient, and what MTSS intervention supports, including great tier-one instruction, have to occur to keep these students on track for proficiency. The only reason we covered this presentation because it's on the calendar for this board meeting. And so with that, we can take questions and if we need follow-up on standardized assessment data, we're more than willing to come back at the next board meeting and have further conversations.
What are some of the things that Robson Elementary is doing differently?
I can answer that, thank you. So speaking to Ms. Wilkins-Johnson, she's the principal at Robson, they've taken the last three years to really focus on what quality learning looks like in classrooms. And so they've really dug in at all levels and created systems around how they're doing business with their admin team, tightly scheduled meetings and focused agenda items on what students, focused on student learning as far as their instructional leadership team. They've really created expectations for professional learning communities and supported teachers on standards, grade-level standards instruction, the supports that are needed to be able to ensure that they're delivering quality instruction at that level. They've capitalized on the school improvement coach and the instructional coach to support teachers that they see might need more help administering the standards or delivering quality instruction and then making sure that they have those feedback cycles with teachers. And they capitalized on ESAR funds to hire a reading interventionist to ensure that they could really strengthen their tier-two and tier-three for students who had gaps so that they would be able to move them up and catch them up. And I think that one of the last things is they've really, as their admin team, have focused on creating systems around the data that they use to make their decisions as well as support teachers in their instructional decisions. And they've worked with research and evaluation to create an electronic data system that helps them progress monitor students regularly so that their teachers have ready data, not only from their benchmarks, but from the progress monitoring and their common formative assessments, to be able to look at that data and make solid instructional decisions that they're, they can readily make changes around their instruction with.
Well, I, I think the obvious comment or question is, some of our other schools are gonna try to, to follow suit.
Well, I can say that I know that the work that the three of us do is, with our leaders, is around this, a lot of the systems that have been implemented at Robson. So I can, I can just tell you that I do know that the work is happening. It just looks maybe a little bit different in some campuses depending on, on the makeup of, of whether they have brand-new teachers. That, that takes a little bit different work than if you have veteran teachers and what the grade levels are comprised of and where you are with your real deep understanding of what the standards are at your grade level and how the delivery of that instruction is impacting your students. So I can say, at least with the schools that I get to work with, I know that we're focused on the same types of things. It is really just kind of tightening those systems at each school so that they can continue to see this not only at Robson, but rippled out.
Okay. President Hutchinson, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. I want to remind the public that this is the first board that's had the guts to establish academic goals as board goals. And, and that the district and each school and indeed our community has made major investments in time, talent and treasure in trying to move the needle on proficiency. It's, it's obvious that there has to be significant moves to improve the graduation rate in ELA and math performances. What I want to make sure is that superintendency, the board, administration has the courage to listen. I, I, I really believe when research tells us that the most important factor in student learning is the instructor. Excuse me. Are we willing to listen to teachers, students, administrators, specialists? What are the obstacles? And what are the paths to success? Using Robson as an example is great. And I really applaud for Member Walden's question, what's working at that school? We need to ask that district-wide because of the dedication of everyone in this effort. But what are our obstacles? What are our paths to success? And then we need to move with a sense of urgency. So I guess my, my challenge is first to superintendency. And, and then what we as a district need to do to move the needle? Because I agree with, with Ms. Mesa, that what works at one school is not necessarily going to work at other schools. We've got to find, we've got to find at each school what's gonna move that needle. Yet the district has to support, has to support its classified staff, its teachers and its administrators in this mission. The most important mission that we have, which is to improve what kids can do and what they know. So I'm, I'm hoping that this board, which had the courage to set student outcomes as their goals, will have the courage to listen and try to really figure out what's working, what's not working. And that we really focus each and every meeting on monitoring the progress that our kids are making.
Thank you, President Hutchinson. And I don't know if you can see, they have a room with many principals in it and they're here tonight to hear the discussion. And we, I hope you heard her message and our message that this is reviewing our goals and this is about how we did. In the future, we'll talk about what we did and also look in these, at these results in more detail by school and by different disaggregations we talked about. So it's not a cliffhanger, but that is what will be coming with this. And we're not going to, I think I speak for all of us, we're not going to change our direction of focusing on how students are doing in terms of our, our focus. But, but that, that's to come for a future meeting. Okay, with that, no other questions, no other comments? We have one more agenda item. And so I will now accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Member Sears, moved by Member Walden. Seconded by Member Sears, moved by Member Walden. All in favor, please take our vote. And thank you all the principals who've come tonight and assistant principals and others to hear this, uh, discussion.
I got it. Yes. Aye.
By a vote of five to zero, we are adjourned.